Thank you. I'd like to welcome you to the July 3, 2018 special meeting, Board of Education, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome Dr. Julie Ford and Ms. Westphal. Would you please call the roll?
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown.
Present.
Valdivia Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Yeager.
I'd like now to entertain a motion to approve the special agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion in second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. So moved. And we move into communications, Dr. Ford.
Well, I'm going to apologize to the team that met with me earlier today because I'm just going to kind of go over the same thing real quick as a quick introduction. You know, I've been hired and I do want to thank everyone again for the opportunity to serve in Kansas City Public Schools. And it is an interim position. Oh, I'll just hold it. I can hold it. Okay. It is an interim position. So I thought just for, I would look up the word interim. In my career, I have about 37, 38 years in education, but I've been in interim four times. And I don't know if that says anything, but it's always worked out, so I'm hopeful this time will work too. But as I look at the word interim, if you look it up, it gives you some sentences to use it in context. So these were a couple sentences to put the word interim in context. This first one, I think you'll really like. In the interim, I'll keep my fingers crossed. Is that what you guys are doing? Then this one, an interim arrangement. Then there were quite a few synonyms that were also used around interim, like the word meanwhile, fill-in, acting, meantime, transitional. Then there's some others, pro-ten, short-term, makeshift, short-term, or provisional. But the one that I really liked, and I hope you will feel this way about me, both the board and the community and the teachers, I'm hoping really to be the caretaker. The caretaker in between, and it won't be very long. My contract is for 60 days or less, so it just kind of depends. I don't have a stop date yet, so it's kind of where that falls. But I want to tell you my personal mission, and I developed this in the 1990s. If you kind of remember, we did a lot. But my personal mission is always expect the best. And that's especially with myself. You know, I've got to make sure that I'm doing my very best. I need to expect the best of the people around me, expect the best for the board. And we have got to do this in order to expect the best for our kids because they do deserve the best. They're counting on us. So expect the best. And then the second part of it is to see the good. And I think in my experience in school districts, you know, we've really been focusing a lot on sometimes the negative. And schools and districts and boards and people, we're all trying to do some good or we wouldn't be in this job. But we've kind of got to see the good and tell people the good that we're seeing. And you know, I have been called a polyamor before, and I don't take that bad. I can always kind of see the good side even in a negative situation. I've shared this, our cabin is in that area where the cabins are burning in Colorado. So I've been looking for that good situation. We may not have a cabin by this evening, but I'm still, even in bad situations, you can see some good. Opportunities to grow, opportunities to get better. The next one is to believe. We all have got to believe. We've got to believe in what we're doing. We have to believe in each other. We have to believe that we're here for the right reasons, that we're going to make our kids better. We're going to, I mean, they are counting on us again to believe in them. And then finally, the last one is the fourth tenant of my personal mission is to help any way I can. And I really sincerely mean that. If someone wants to come and talk to me and needs some help, my door's open and I'm anxious to help in any way I can. So I did show up yesterday morning, and I've been here almost 48 hours now. And I have to tell you, my impression is good. You have some great staff members here. The people that I've met have been kind, they've been willing to help, they've gone the extra mile. And I'm really excited about this opportunity. I went home last night and I did call Dr. Faust. I've been talking to him probably every two or three days, but I couldn't help but say, boy, you are inheriting a really nice bunch of folks to work with. I mean, I probably hang out with some of these folks if I was here very long, but they are good people. And you know, I am impressed with how so many people have said, I am here to help him because I want him to be successful for our kids. And he is just such a positive person. I think he's asking all the right questions, and I think it can be a really good transition. And partly the reason with some of the staff members that we've had and their attitudes about, we're here to do what we can and the board is wanting to improve and move from there. So first 48 hours, I'm really impressed with Kansas City Public Schools. I have to tell you though, it's not my first time to be impressed. I worked for the State Department of Education on School Improvement eight or three years ago. And I'm going to tell you, a lot of districts are looking at Kansas City Public Schools and a lot of your initiatives as really some really model work. And the example is your diploma plus program. That has some potential to make a real good difference for a lot of students. It's, I mean, I know you're at the beginning stages, but there's, if you look at the KSDE's goals, boy, it fits right in there with making sure students are transitioning to work and to careers and to college. So you know, I just, I have admired your district for a long time and I feel so fortunate to be here. And I probably won't do everything perfect, but do consider my door open and I'm here to help you in any way.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Dr. Ford, and we appreciate your optimism and we look forward to a successful tenure with you. Any other board members having communications?
I went to the JE Duniversity Outreach last week where they have all their contractors come in, like tell them what's going on for the next couple of months. And they had a full room of women, minorities, veterans, and they answered questions and they were very, very welcoming. So the next one is in September, and I want to go back in to see the same people I got to talk to last week, but it was very, very informative.
Any other communications? Just to share with you, the culturally relevant pedagogy seminar is in its second week at Washtenaw. And so we have, we had two participants from Kansas City, Kansas, but one did not move on in her career. But we're, it will be videotaped and the resources will be available for anybody on the State Board of Education website. Other than that, all right, item number three is executive session. I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session.
First one, I'm not sure how long it takes. 15 minutes.
Okay, at 5:10 for 15 minutes to receive update on teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume at 5:25 with no action to follow. Need a motion?
I move. Go to executive session. A second.
Motion in second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed. We're into executive session.
Do you want to include Dr. Mather in addition to Dr. Ford?
Will include Dr. Mather and Dr. Ford. Thank you.
I think we may want to go to the conference room since we have the full house, I think.
All right. Okay, we'll come back in order, please. I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at 5:35.
Definitely. Excuse me, we need a motion to come back in first.
Need a motion to come back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been made, motion in second. Is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed. Now, I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at 5:35 for 20 minutes for discussion of personnel application information pursuant to an exception for non-elected personnel under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to regular session at 5:55 with possible action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed.
Mr. Thompson? And? That is? Anybody else?
Right, but I need a note, motion to come back into regular session.
So moved.
Been moved in second to come back into regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passed. Now, I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at 6:10, how about 4:20 minutes? Good enough? To review salaries and benefits of identifiable individuals pursuant to an exception for non-elected personnel under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to regular session at 6:30 with possible action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passed.
And Mr. Thompson?
Wherever you might be.
Come back in order, please. Motion to come back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed. Reports to the superintendent.
Our first one today is to look at, they approved the human resource report with recommendations. And this was prepared and submitted by Mr. Thompson. Just a quick note, we are to the point where it is getting a little nervous about if some of these teachers and things, we don't approve their contract, that they may look elsewhere too. So I'm making a recommendation today that we approve these contracts.
We need a motion.
I move to approve personnel report.
HR report?
HR personnel.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the human resources report and recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passed.
The next report is about the employee salary schedules. And again, at this point, they were prepared by the HR and department to kind of look at where we're at on each of those, and we are making a recommendation for approval.
Is there a motion?
I'm moving that we approve the HR.
I'm sorry, is there a discussion on this item first? Are there some questions?
Clarification needed for the plumber column. If we could talk more about how that column was developed. It's listed under shop area, and they moved from one column to another. Could you kind of explain why they were moved over?
Sure. There've been multiple conversations with the director of physical properties about having the plumbers, electricians, and the HVAC, the pipe fitters, the MEP folks, all in one class because they tend to be clumped together. So we made the recommendation to the board to, as we were looking at revising the salary schedule, to move the plumbers from one class to the class, the same class of the electricians and the pipe fitters. But we expanded the salary schedule to include the salaries of the existing plumbers, so there's not an additional pay for them to move. We just made the salary schedule so that it can incorporate that into it. So that way, all the MEP people in one class.
And how many do we have in the shop? And I think we have the same scenario going on in shop foreman, the plumbers moving to the electrician and pipe fitters.
Foreman just receive an additional hourly amount if they are in a foreman position, which is board-approved, which is $1.40 an hour. So they're not a separate class. I don't have that in front of me, but there's four plumbers, that's what you're asking. I believe there's four district plumbers.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
Four district plumbers.
No, class five added it for the shop plumbers, as you just said.
There is the salary schedule for foremen. The next one, the one that goes on, it's a class eight, I'm sorry, six, seven, eight, nine through 11, so it just, it just gives that additional $1.40. It just spells it out for them.
So it gives them additional $1.40 now, and then with the 2%, it'll give them additional 2%?
The dollar, they're placed on additional on the salary schedule. That salary or hourly rate actually incorporates the $1.40. So any increase, if you did provide a 2% increase would be on top of that.
Top of that. And how many, are all our plumbers master plumbers, all our?
We have four plumbers, and I don't have all of their credentials in front of me, so I don't know what you mean by masters plumbers.
Credentials. You know, you're not apprentice. They're not apprentice plumbers.
Right. And it's not required to be like a journeyman plumber, I don't know what you're thinking of.
So we don't have?
Yeah, we don't require, the districts never in the past required that, whether electricians, plumbers, or what.
And with all our new building, how many jobs have we had compared to what you think we're going to have?
In the plumbing field?
You'll just say plumbing, since we did wind-up and summer, all new.
The good news that we replumbed all of those schools.
Yeah.
So right now, there hasn't been any plans to increase the positions district-wise.
Okay.
At this juncture, the director has not requested that. So based on the bond work, I'm not sure it's dictating to add or to decrease.
So they're just on call?
Yeah. Four plumbers are full-time employees in this district.
So the electricians and pipe fitters who were, their salaries decreasing?
No. Nobody's salaries changing or decreasing. We just made sure everybody whose current salary can fit on that class.
Okay.
They can fit within that range. And the salary schedules are just, what we've done is try to equalize all the salary schedules. So every step equals either 1% or 2% depending on the salary schedule.
But the new plumbers, electrician, pipe fitters did receive the $1.40 increase in this class, 10 shop foreman.
If they're a foreman, they already received the $1.40. So when we combine the classes and move the plumbers to the next class, I think it's 10, they don't get an increase for that.
What is an increased number here? There's an increased hourly rate.
There should be a range of an hourly rate, right? The base all the way down to whatever step 20 they have on there.
Oh.
Yeah. They fall within that range and one of those steps with no change in their salary. If there was a change to their salary, we'd have to bring it to the board for approval for that. So what I'm sharing is that they fit within that range.
All right.
And is that the same for the payroll accountants?
The payroll accountants would be moved, we have looked at salary structure and the compensation study we did, but actually that's been dated, I think, gosh, it was back in 11 and 12 or 10 and 11. And felt like we had not placed the payroll accountants in the right category. So we were making the recommendation to create a separate class for them. They have not moved to that class, obviously, because the salary schedule's not agreed. If we moved them, it would result in an increase for them, total increase of the, there's two payroll folks and two accountants. Two accountants and two payroll personnel. I believe the total cost, we would put in front of the board at another board meeting would be somewhere around $9,000 to $10,000. That increase for all of the positions on that class is also part of their current budget, so it's not additional. It would fit within the budget of that department.
The same for student services specialist? There was no category for them?
There was no category for them. Many of the positions that were, folks that were in those positions, actually, I believe in HR, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, many of those folks took other positions. So there's a lot of vacant positions right now. But those positions actually supervised a number of employees, and we felt like they really needed, based on the DOL regs, to be an accepted category and moved on their own salary class. And that too, would fit within their budget structure for that department currently. But felt like they needed to be separate because of the responsibilities.
And what is the student services, if you could clarify, inside of the school, what do they?
So student services is a central office department that focuses on all of parent issues, transfers for students from schools. They deal with all of the, any student concerns, transcripts, graduation services. So if you think of an eternity, alternative to, alternative to special ed, I'll check that, alternative to suspension-type programs like Project PAC, ASP, they oversee all of that, social workers, counselors, they supervise all the counselors. So they essentially do anything that you can think about with students and parents.
And where were they before, or previously? Is it, before we created special column, where were they?
They were incorporated on what column was it?
They were on the school resource, so the one right below it, that you see, it said school resource, they were in that class three.
That says college and career, that's marked out.
Right.
Is that a title change or is it still?
No, that's a different title. They were just grouped in.
Oh, they were just there previously. Just didn't have a title there. Okay.
And one last, Newick Red, Inc., well, actually Driver Training, data integrity assistant, data integrity facilitator with parents as teachers.
I made a pretty job.
Yeah, so that is our hero program. So they created a new position, the data integrity facilitator, which is one person, and the assistant fell into a different class before, and so they are, so they're in this position.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
In the last part, class 11 and 12 under administrators slash supervisors, based upon my understanding, these are contracts with individuals. So based upon that, I would recommend for us to remove those columns from the schedule because they are negotiated individually rather than on a class schedule.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we remove class 11 and 12 because they are negotiated.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds, there's discussion.
Let me make sure it's a motion to accept the rest of the schedule.
Yes, accept the rest of the schedule with the removal of class 11 and 12, was the under administrator.
The second still hold?
A second.
It's been moved in second to retain the other red identified and remove class 11 and 12. Questions?
11 and 12, you say?
Correct.
Yeah.
No questions? Ready for a vote? Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Your next item, I think.
I've gotten out of my computer system now. So we are at?
Budget decisions.
Okay, yes, we're gonna, at this point, have a presentation by Kelly about the budget decisions. But before we go on to that, I did want to, on each of your seats, we did put a letter about budget and some budget training that's coming up. Of course, we're really behind on this. Truthfully, we used to do budget training in June, early June, or even late May, and because of the court case, the state has not even trained folks on budgets. And I'm going to be honest, some districts haven't even started on their budget. Kansas City, this is another good thing. You guys are ahead of the card on this. But the trouble is, now the clock is ticking because we have got to get our budget in so that it can be approved in August. So there are some trainings going up. We have chosen to go to the July 16 meeting, and it is at Green Bush. And we are asking board members if they would like to attend. If you don't go to Green Bush, you could probably go over to Topeka and I could meet. One of the things, we really probably only want a representative or a couple representatives. And the reason we wouldn't want to have a forum at a training if you all showed up at the same training. So if you have any interest in learning more about how a district puts together a budget, and it's usually presented by Dr. Dale Dennis and Craig Nuschwonder, there will be some things there that we will find out that we don't know right now. And I think Kelly's going to point out one is about at-risk because they are going to probably share some information, and I think everybody's kind of in the, in the state is kind of wanting to know what that information will be. So if, I will refer to Ms. Jones about, and who wants to go, to make sure that we include you. And if somebody wants to go to Topeka, I'd stay over with them too, or if somebody wants to go with us to Green Bush. I have to commend our staff. The reason they're going is so the sooner they get through the training, the quicker they can start using the software and entering the data. And this is not an easy task. I will tell you, it's very consuming. And I've also asked our teachers association if they have a desire to send anyone to this too. So hopefully, they'll let us know. But I think it's something that if you, we go together as a group and kind of learn on it, and it might help down the road on how budgets are put together and go from there. And like I say, I've talked to one superintendent, and they're about in the process where we are. I've talked to another superintendent in a smaller district, they haven't even started talking about budget items. So they're really behind. So I again commend this district for taking the actions to start in February, March, and having long-term discussions about budget.
So we can tell you at any end of the meeting?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ford, Dr. Lynn, board member. It's good evening. Sorry, I don't have a screen and a presentation. I have a presentation, I'm handing it to you, but I have about five or six pages. So I think I can walk you through this, and then we'll turn over the pleasure to the board on what we need to do. So I will talk loud first for all folks in the room as well. The first two pages of the handout that I gave you really are just the dates of the times we've met. If you could turn to the second page, I just kept them on, this is actually right from our last budget meeting, so you've seen this before. If you turn to the second page, that's really what I want to emphasize. Dr. Ford was kind of talking about this a little bit, where we're feeling like we're at this crunch time a little bit. I was surprised when she actually shared with me that some districts haven't even had conversations yet because I'm like, gosh, I don't know what they're doing because they've got to prepare these forms. But we've been in conversation with the state on a regular basis. They're starting their budget meetings, which I strongly encourage someone to attend if you can. I think you'd learn a lot from that. But they're not going to release the state forms till after, probably the 17th or 18th of July, which is extremely late. And that's a possibility. We don't even know for certain. But the second page of this kind of gives you an outline of just so you all kind of have a sense of where we're at, what we need to do. So we're in July now, so we're having this special budget meeting tonight just to bring back kind of the decisions you made. That's what I want to do this evening. Verify those things, give some additional information to you as we've continued to try to put this budget together. Because Kristen is actually preparing all of it with her team based on our conversations. So hopefully, all goes well, keep our fingers crossed we can just put it into the forms. But that, we'll see if that works that well. So the 16th, as Dr. Ford said, is the budget workshop. We hope around the 17th, 18th, 19th, they're talking about releasing the budget forms, which is late. So now the timeline starts to get kind of a little bit iffy for us because we have to be able to publish the budget for 10 full days. So we may have to request from the board a special meeting just to approve the notice of hearing. The notice of hearing is the code 99. If you remember the two pages I showed you in the budget, that really summarizes your budget, the two big pages, the last budget meeting. We have to get a motion from the board to actually publish that. And we have to then publish it for 10 days, and then at the next following board meeting, the board then opens it up for a public hearing on the budget. And so you have to have the 10 days prior to that. Well, unfortunately, with the existing board meeting dates, it doesn't fall for us to get the 10 days of being published. So I've given you an outline of possibly a special meeting no later than July 31st. Can't happen later than July 31st. Might want to do it sooner, but that's all going to be dependent on budget forms being released and us being able to actually get the information into the budget forms. If we can't get it into the budget forms, it doesn't generate the code 99. So that's why those all play together. Then on August 2, Then, on August 2nd, that's, I think, a Thursday, so that's when we, or maybe the Wednesday prior, we have to inform our official newspaper, the board's official newspaper, to publish it on the 2nd for the 10 days. They only publish it once a week, so that's why this window gets real tight for us, although we track the days to make sure. Then, on the 14th, which is a scheduled board meeting, then we have the hearing of the budget, as I mentioned, then following typically the approval of the budget, so that we can submit it to the county clerk and submit the budget to KSDE no later than the 25th of August, that's the deadline. So, everybody will be under that crunch. I share this with you, just because you can, for the sense of our urgency, the sense of the board's budget getting accomplished, we're gonna be really tight around the end of July. I mean, we don't really know what to anticipate at this point, but I wanted at least forecast for you that we might, we might need to call. And I think that potentially can be done by phone call, so we can talk to you all and figure out how we wanna do that. Okay? Questions about the schedule? All good? So, then the next page, our decisions that we've made, now the board has made in our last board meeting, what I'm trying to do is just summarize them for you. So, if you remember, we went through each one of these books, and I, and I have them back, I don't have ones that you took notes in, because I didn't know whose was whose, so I've got brand clean new ones for you, if you wanna look at those this evening, but if I could just summarize what we discussed, and then we can talk about if we got it right. So, we talked about first where the available cash would be, we talked about Senate Bill 423, and how much money we would be getting from the general fund for 423, the new, the GANAL, and that's the $4.2 million. And remember, we talked about how KSDE released, I think, it was 7.2 in the general fund, and I said that was an accurate figure, because that was based on the SO-66, which is the Superintendent Report that's submitted, that's the estimate. Following our audit, then I was giving you the actual figures from our legal max letter from KSDE, following the audits, 4.2 million dollars, what we're anticipating in the general fund. In addition to the 1.5 million for special education, that's a separate line, that's further down. Then, when we went through these booklets at the last board meeting, when we had special budget board meeting, the board saved $677,000, and that's just from the general fund, really only. We reviewed the general fund, the at-risk budget, special reserve and contingency, and I'll talk about special reserve and contingency and that, but we saved the 677,000, I'll show you exactly where you saved that.
Just a quick question, are those encumbered, are those funds encumbered funds?
The funds that we saved, 677, now, those are the monies that we actually looked at that were budgeted by department budgets, and what we were gonna actually take from those budgets, so that we can apply to other things that y'all wanted to fund. So, we're looking at expenditures, so nothing is encumbered or spent. Then, we talked about the need for the LOB cash and the transfer money through contingency into the supplemental general fund, the LOB, local option budget, because if we didn't have that cash in the LOB, then the mill levy was gonna go up. And you guys had provided direction to all of us to make sure we keep the mill levy flat, so now, I told you, we're looking at potentially $6 million in needed cash to put in the LOB. So, we had budgeted, we've tried to pre-budget, $4 million, so that was in there, so I just left that in as part of the cash for the next year. We talked about our insurance claim reimbursement that we got, because our loss ratio was really good with our insurance, so they essentially gave us some money back, which will offset the insurance increase, so that's a good thing. So, that money is in the potential available cash. We also had budgeted for increased potential projections or staffing, added staffing, it's all based on September 20 count, there was a million dollars, and we left that in there, so that's available cash. Jump down to the sped funding that I just mentioned from Senate Bill 423, so that's $1,578,769, that figure's given to us by KSDE, that figure we anticipate still getting, so I left that in the available cash. So, that was the available cash, and then we talked about your contingency reserve, and we talked about your special reserve. So, first, we recommended that you could have, take out whatever you chose to take out of your contingency reserve, I recommended 1.5 million dollars, and then your special reserve fund, which actually funds your self-funded work comp claims, so that we could take out, my recommendation would be a million dollars. And so, that's what you guys decided at the last meeting, so I put the 2.5 million dollars in the available cash. Just as a caveat, I always say this, is that that's a one-time one, so you guys all knew that, once we take it out, it's, it doesn't replenish itself unless the board chooses then to transform it back into contingency or special reserve. So, the total available dollars is 15.4 million dollars, just over 15.4 million dollars. So, I just wanna talk real quickly about one more thing, which is kinda in the middle with the $3 million figure to the side. This is from Senate Bill 423, from what the court's decisions were, has indicated that the legislature has to go back and look at inflation that was not built into the current FY '18, which was 17, 18 school year, and the FY '19, which is the current, now, 18, 19 school year, and reinstate inflation dollars. And also look at the possibility in reinstating, or not reinstating, inputting inflation funds for the five years of the plan, the GANAL plan too, because no, no money was put into the plan that was forwarded to the courts for inflation. That money's not here, it's not in the bill, the legislature will go back in session in January, and they'll have to make decisions on if they're going to do that, and if they do, then there's a possibility we'll get some money back. And the formula's a very complicated formula, but the estimate, and it's a high-level estimate that we've been able to get from the state right now, is possibly $3 million, that's why I put it to the side. The money really doesn't exist yet, but there's a possibility we'll come back to the board and go, hey, guess what? The legislature did this, they reinstated, you know, inflationary cost into the case, and now we have some extra money. So, that would be a really good thing for the school district if that happens, and I anticipate that conversation will happen in the legislature when they come back in session. Don't have it now, so don't want you thinking about it, but want you to keep it in the back of your mind, because if it does happen, you're gonna have to come back, we're gonna call and say, we need to start thinking about what we wanna do with this money, because we'll have to allocate it at that point. Questions about the available cash? All, all ring a bell, conversations we've had?
You know, just a quick question, the inflation, does that, does that factor in cost of living?
The inflationary percentage rate, I believe, was based on 2.3%. I wanna think that in the case, they used a CPI inflationary rate, so that would encompass potentially the cost of living, the cost of living rate if you looked at it based on CPI.
Okay.
Okay?
But the 4.2 is hard cash?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, everything else you see on that list besides that 3 million to the right, that's the available cash.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, then the expenditures that we talked about, there's two columns, and there's a couple changes, and that's what I'm highlighting for the board for conversation tonight, but the very first one, I'll go through these very quickly, was the $6 million for the LOB cash that we talked about, just talked about again. Expenditure for just over 1.5 million for our increase in our health insurance coverage, and we're gonna see that claims kinda offset that, so we shouldn't have to worry about that. The sub-program potential increase that I projected all along at $725,000. Compensation for staff, and you can see that that's blacked out, because we're still in conversation with the board. Increase for teacher, increase teachers FY '19, that's the increased staff that we talked about with the revenue for the money that was set aside for the projections, so we had to add teachers, that's the expense of it, so we actually have a little more in the budget, but we only had about $825,000. And then, early childhood teachers, we've talked about, alternative programs, in our last budget meeting, we thought we had about $139,000 left that we were gonna put with alternative tier-three programs, is how you guys define that, so I put that in there. The garden project for transportation costs, I just put 52,000, I believe it was 5106L, but I just rounded it to 52,000. The other classified increases at the 870 that we discussed, the FLC expansion, which is the alternative program for the additional 25 slots, I believe it was, for the 225,000, the additional social workers, 31 additional social workers at 1.8 million, and then the spending increase that I just talked about, that would be, that's an expenditure as well. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about sped in a minute regarding our audit. But those are what we talked about as, this is our available cash, these are expenditures. Well, as we looked at the expenditures, we ended up being $687,000 in the red, after all of our conversation last time. So, I think a couple things that occurred, the first thing I think that occurred is that we originally talked about two programs in the at-risk budget, trying to eliminate those, and I think we added them in your column, but then we took them back off the table and said, well, we're gonna wait another year before we look at Northwest Schedule and Emerson. So, that, that would make the difference, and then the other difference, I believe, is the 139,000. So, we're, so the recommended changes are a couple things, so I think I've got to try to make a recommendation to the board to try to balance this cash, available cash, and the expenditures. Kristen and I, Kristen and I continue to look at the supplemental general fund, we do believe that estimating, until we get the forms and we can plug everything in based on our tax revenues, that we're probably gonna need 5.5 million dollars in cash, a little bit nervous about that, but I think that that's probably a safe bet, so that's different than the 6 million of expenditure that we needed, okay? So, that's good, that's 500,000 to offset that part that's in the red. The insurance, we've already talked about, that increased sub-program, all the other things we have talked about remain the same, took the 139,000 out for the alternatives, and I think that's what we thought was the leftover money to put into tier-three intervention programs, I'm just trying to balance this budget, you can put it back in. Everything else is the same, with the exception of the special education audit numbers. After we met at the last board meeting, we got our final legal max letter, which describes our audit results. Everything else, the 4.2 million, we're pretty close, I think we're right on the money with that, but what happened was the special ed audit came in less than we anticipated. Actually, with their audit, they were down from their state aid, 1.6 million dollars. So, that's a concern for the next year, now that could change based on September 20 count coming up, but we can't plan on something we don't have, so I have to try to offset that 1.6 million. My recommendation to the board is to use the new sped money of 1.5 million essentially to offset that, that difference, because the expenditures aren't going up in sped unless you allocate them to, so you can actually offset the 1.6 with the 1.5, if that makes sense. But that still leaves me 160,000 right now. Does that make sense? That's a lot of numbers, I know it is, I'm sorry. Are you following me, okay?
Yeah.
Questions about that?
Are there any structures in place that can be used as those, as alternative programs?
For the 139,000 that you put there? At the last time we had met, I think that we talked with Dr. Strickland and with Ms. Clay about getting a list of all of the tier-three intervention programs, that's my word, that we could give back to you, and I think that will take care of what you're suggesting with 139,000, but they're getting together right now, trying to define what all those programs look like. Because in your budget, if you recall, we went through here, we had money in their respective lines for tier-three interventions. So, that's why we said we're gonna bring back a list of what those look like.
So, there may not be a gap?
I don't feel like there is, but I wanted you to be aware that that's what we talked about, was the 139, but I think we need to use that to offset this deficit. But I don't think there'll be a gap.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about using the 139, maybe they put those other tier-three dollars, because from that calculation, it was kinda, it was to say extra, but we talked about, maybe they have the other dollars, so I, I agree, I think.
Yeah. And, and is that in all levels, or it's just elementary, or what? I can't remember.
There's tier-three intervention dollars, K-12, it's in both the place, both the lines specific for tier-three interventions, as well as Dr. Strickland, so.
Good.
Questions about that? Are we good there for now? Okay. So, the next page, don't need to go into detail, I don't think, with you, but I wanted you to show you exactly the things that you all recommended to change and cut, where that $677,000 came from, what we originally recommended, and what you all decided after a lot of in-depth conversation and thinking about what you wanted to do. These are the things that you made the final decision, so this is how we came to that $677,000 figure. I don't happen to answer any questions about those particular cuts, but... Do they all look familiar? I mean, nothing, we captured everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
I will point out, since we're on the page, that we did reduce the convocation to 10,000 from 20, and a little bit concerned about that, former costs from prior years, I think you asked us about that at the last budget meeting, we're probably closer to former expenses of around 18,000, so it was around the 20,000 figure, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. The biggest expense that we incur with that is that our bus drivers are not on duty, so we pay them to attend convocation, as well as a few other staff that are not on duty, and we actually bus all of our staff to convocation, because as you all know, there's not a lot of parking at Memorial Hall, so we actually send buses to all the high schools, and people take the bus and go, so the drivers take them down to Memorial. Sharing that with you as a point of information and conversation, we did put the cut in there, but I am a little bit concerned about that, I'm looking at Pat's budget.
For clarity, the, the entire 20,000 went for buses?
Went for total expenditures, majority of, the majority of it went, probably their buses, don't hold me to this, but I can give you pretty rough estimates just from my recollection reviewing it. Probably the majority of it went to the actual paying of staff that were off-duty, so you had to pay them their hourly rate for two and a half hours to come in and attend a convocation. I probably shouldn't guess figures, but I'll probably get them wrong. Between that, and we had some audiovisual equipment rental that would occur at convocation, buses, staff time, audiovisual, some overtime for communication staff, all equaled around 18, 19,000 in that range, just under the 20,000 figure. Facility, thank you, yeah, facility would be another one, yeah, I don't think I even counted that, so we may be right to 20,000. Just trying to go back and try to capture very quickly what we're looking at on that. Doesn't seem like a big dollar amount, but it's concerning to me when we're actually budgeting so tightly on this, so, just want you to be aware of that. Questions about that? Everything else looks like you recall it, that's where we were at, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, the last page I have for conversation is just some forecasting for you for next year, and Dr. Ford was actually alluding to this, and he'll have a lot of information for you today, I think we are gonna find out a little bit more about what I'm calling the local option budget supplemental general fund mandated transfers out of the local tax money to the at-risk budget and to the bilingual budgets. So, in Senate Bill 423, it is requiring that we look at a very complicated formula, that is a probation percentage of the number of at-risk kids we have and the number of, I'm sorry, the percentage of the at-risk waiting and the percentage of the bilingual waiting, and that equal amount comes out of the LOB and is transferred to those two respective funds. That will impact us, that's a big deal, and how we define that, we don't know. Kristen and I have been breaking pencil lids, trying to see if we could even estimate. We think we are looking at about a 10 to 12 million dollar transfer out of the LOB. We do believe some of those expenses will be the same expenses that we can cover, but that's what we'll learn more, that are already being covered, so it's a shuffling of money a little bit, but we'll learn more about that at the budget. But that's, that's a big flex, I'm forecasting that, because that's a very, that's a concern for me in the new Senate Bill 423. And then, for 19, 20, forecasting, because, you know, I've shared with you every budget meeting, can't think about the current year, gotta think at least one year out, as we forecast. meeting, can't think about the current year, gotta think at least one year out as we forecast that. The social workers that we pay for and some of the other expenses that we just looked at out of contingency and out of special reserve, just keep in the back of your mind always that that money won't be there unless you once again choose to take out that same amount of money from that special reserve and contingency. At some point, you wanna not take that money out. We'll have to figure out how to fund those things first, I would think. That would be my recommendation to you all. We're gonna harp on this cash balance for you LOB, because come next year, this time next year, the cash balance is gonna be low in your supplemental general fund again, so you're gonna have to pre-plan for that. We did in this book, and we put some money in the, kind of a, I think we called it here, supplemental general fund transfer or something, or LOB transfer. So we're trying to plan for you with that. We shared that figure with you, but just keeping it in front of you, because it's gonna become important. The mental health pilot, which we are getting money from the state, about $840,000, really good thing, it's gonna cover about 10 or 11 of the social worker positions, but right now, it's a one-year program. They are saying two to three years. I anticipate if I had the crystal ball, that we will get two years, but I can't guarantee it, so I just want you all to have that in front of you, that that $840,000, either those positions become ripped or those positions have to be funded in the next budget. We just talked about the inflationary fund, so that could be potentially some positive cash flow for the budget, which would be very good, and can be used for any of the things we just talked about. And then there was a question about the security officers and LEOs, and I don't know if there might be another agenda I'd have to bring to the board and talk about that, but wanna forecast that as a possibility as well. So those are just things that I'm gonna keep trying to remind you, because I don't want us to lose sight of that, and then we go, darn it, here we are, now what do we do? Because these are big ticket items. Questions about those? So what, Dr. Lynn, where do you wanna go from here? I mean, I've given a capsule, we're at?
Probably, you know, how, how are we going to find additional resources?
Yeah.
If we don't take one more round at your numbers?
Yeah. I mean, we brought the books, so we went through line by line last time. I think that you guys took out, from my understanding, everything. The other things are not recommended even, because you felt they were important, and I understand that. We could certainly try to do that. That was a six-hour process last time, I didn't go through that.
Well, we've already gone through once.
Yeah.
So we're familiar with them. But we are interested in funding some other things, so.
So a couple of things is?
There's no other way, correct?
Well, the one option might be, is if you're able to find some things to cut here, that's certainly the one option. The second option could be to wait and see if these inflationary dollars actually take place, but that will not be until the spring, at the earliest, probably.
Late spring.
Yeah, May or June. I mean, depends when the session's over and a decision's made. So that's a possibility, but I think that could be two years.
If it passes prologue, it will be late spring.
Yeah. So those would be the two areas that I would think that potentially there would be available funds. And I'm happy to pass these out, I brought them back to you all, it's totally up to you. I just know that we went through it line by line last time.
Right, so right now, it's just, you know, we're, we, we don't, if those are the only two options we have, then those are only, then we don't have any other option, in my opinion.
If there's not any other revenue that we haven't talked about that's coming, other than raising the mill levy, I guess we did talk about that once, we took that off the table, but I wanna be transparent, that that's always a possibility too. Try to go with your supplemental general fund, your local option budget, go, we're at 30%, we're matched, but we could go through a protest petition to 31%. That would generate some revenue at raising the mill levy. So I wanna be very clear about that. Those are the only options. I mean, this is the money that we're getting. It is an increase in money. You guys have done good things with it, but until we get further action from the legislature and finalize this inflationary issue, I don't, there's not initial revenue.
I might point out that we did change our board meetings for July, so we do have a board meeting next, is it next Tuesday on the?
Mm-hmm, yes you do.
Is that something we?
Is that the 10th? That meeting is too early for us, because we can't get the budget in, we have to have the budget in the forms. The forms don't be released until the 6th, or 19th. So the 24th was the next budget meeting, the, I mean, I'm sorry, the next board meeting in July. Honestly, if we can get the forms released and we can get a budget put together from the 19th to the 24th, that might be a small miracle. We will bring that then, if it is, if we're able to do that. I just didn't want to promise it. That's why I forecast a potentially a separate.
What I would almost suggest is I'm gonna plan a meeting individually with board members in this next week. I kind of visit with you all that I'd like to, and maybe individually, we could look at the budget books and have some conversation and could share it with them, maybe try to speed it along a little bit to see if people have any ideas, if, if there are, needs to be more cuts, and then we could either talk about it.
Then we probably need to, then just give us, to them, give them to us, we review them, when we review with you, then we would have better insight into what's there and what's not.
What they're doing.
Okay, at the same time.
So understand, because I collected these up last time, and the reason is that this is a working budget. This will not be a total, we haven't even made the changes in this, of what I just reviewed with you. That's not in here.
Okay.
Because this was the original.
So make sure you tell them about that too.
This is a working spreadsheet. I told you that, yeah, so.
Well, that at the same time.
Yeah. But that will actually make sure that you look at this handout with the changes, because again, not reflected here when you're looking, so you don't duplicate your cut potentially or anything like that.
Okay.
And we'll just get kind of a list of general ideas from board members, and that might help us down the road too.
And that would be helpful for us frankly too, because we're at a point where we can't change the direction of the budget. I'm just saying that we're having a hard time now, being worried that once those forms are released, we wanna be able to put that together.
Okay. Well, before you leave, make sure we get them, and would you like to move on? Any other discussion on this?
Well, thank you for your, for breaking it down to understandable areas.
Okay, next item.
Well, and this one falls right into it, is about school security. So I kind of have asked Chief Warren to kind of explain where we're at with school security officers, and then I also asked Greg to kind of give a recap of how he feels, what's some information that he thinks you should consider. Again, I'd almost use this as an information item tonight, because this will fit in with your other talk about budget as you go forward. So I'll turn it over to you, Chief Warren.
Appreciate that, Dr. Ford, Dr. Lynn, board members. I really didn't have a format to put together, because I was told it was gonna be a discussion, so I, I think I'm gonna open that up, it's your discussion, whether we're gonna talk about it or discuss, I'm available for that. I can tell you that I think we need to set the stage a little bit, the history for the police department development, it was more improved, I believe, back in 2014.
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, I appreciate that.
No, you're good.
So my history with the district is of 2016, I was hired on as your chief in May 2016. So they moved to that direction, and I know this from my prior history of serving with the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department for 32 years. There was a lot of discussion with school board and some of our senior management staff and everything on arming, security personnel, in what direction and what recommendation would be made. So in the 1990s, there was a state law that came out concerning concurrent jurisdictional authority, gave the universities and community colleges and K-12 systems the ability to join in the cooperation with local governments like RUG and develop their own police agencies. We're very familiar with that here locally with Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and we're very familiar with that throughout the state with all our universities, KU, K-State, and otherwise. So as we move forward here, it is, it's, the, the school security plan is not even formed with the district, it's been there for several years, probably 50 or 60 years since it's moved forward. As we're moving forward into the evolution of 21st century policing, they thought it would be the best model to bring forward based on incurring any liability with the risk of either having people armed and moving into the professional model where it's required by statutory law under Kelly TC, where officers receive standardized training, no different than certified teachers, and certifications with the state, who can revoke those certifications under Kansas C post as well. So here we are today. So today, we currently have, we're slated for staffing, we have 39 staff members. Out of those 39 staff members, we have slots for 37 that are sworn, and we have two security officers that remain, they were very good employees, and the decision moving forward was to eliminate all those jobs altogether, but these two employees were very good, they had a good status. They, they had great equilibrium and great tenure with the school district, so we brought them along with grandfather them in. We also moved from having substitute officers or part-time officers, and we've eliminated that position and moved to having sworn officers as part-time. So currently, we have those positions available, the 39. We have one civilian staffer, it's my executive assistant, so that brings a total of 40 under the police department. One civilian with my executive assistant, two security officers, and arresters, sworn officers, and out of that other group, one is my deputy chief and myself. So we have current five vacancies, and that's a police officer status and one sergeant vacancy. Those vacancies have been very hard throughout the state of Kansas. Hiring law enforcement personnel has been very difficult for a lot of different reasons, but mainly to find qualified individuals, and a lot of people are not interested in this profession to a certain degree. Plus, we're looking for those professions, we're looking for those professionals that currently have that status of certified law enforcement officers to save the school district a lot of money. It costs us approximately $5,000 to send somebody to the state academy. That also requires a 14-week commitment outside of pocket from our district to send them down there, and it costs also approximately $2,500 to uniform them and travel expenses to the state academy, the day-to-day per diem. So we've been looking for officers to fill these gaps since I've been here, that have that equivalent status of the Kansas State law enforcement officer, and we've been working very diligently. All the officers we've lost since the time I've been here, there have been less termination, there's been more where they've moved on to bigger and better jobs in law enforcement, either more money or market police departments. So it's not been anything negative, they've been moving forward. So with that, the, the other officer, I'm sorry, the other officers I have as part-time officers, I have them from, I have about three from Kansas City, Kansas Police Department that work for me part-time. So they acquire all their policies and procedures, and we're safe in that legal liability realm when we bring them on as part-time officers. They still fall under our structure, our policies, and I have one officer who I'm getting ready to hire, he's a KU police officer. I also have a part-time officer who I'm trying to transition into a full-time officer who belongs to me only. She is a certified officer, full-time officer, but she applies for a part-time position only because of her personal status right now. We're trying to get her to move forward, so we can bring her in and fill one of those jobs. I'm looking hopefully to have probably four of those filled here coming up in the very near future. I'm, I'm trying to do my own recruiting here locally and throughout the state as well. So with that, that's a little bit of history. I'll open myself up to any questions, if, if you have some questions about the differences of SROs or, or any concerns on your, yes, ma'am.
So to position a sergeant, how, how long has that been going?
It's been for a year, ma'am, and I, I'll tell you the reason behind that. The reason behind that is right now, myself and the deputy chief, we take up the roles of leaders, managers, and supervisors. It has not been fair, but Sergeant Grant has stepped up and really done very well, but I need patrol officers, I need to fill those positions. Those are the adequate positions that fill positions inside the schools. And currently, we, we currently have slated for, right now, we have two officers for every high school and one for every middle school. Throughout the cluster of the organization, throughout all the 50-some buildings we have that are, that are the elementary, middle schools, and alternative schools, I also have one officer at Bridges and one officer at Fairfax, I apologize. We have, the officers have the responsibility to respond to calls for services down in the elementary schools in their cluster. So they would leave their position from their high school or middle school and respond to a call, call for service in their cluster.
So clarify, what would that position of sergeant be if you were to get these filled? And what is the qualification that would move one of the officers forward to that sergeant, so that it would be filled if you were able to fill all the other positions?
So we could open that internally, we could open it externally by our own ability to seek that. I do not have the job description. I believe there's some preferences there, I don't have it verbatim, but they are a supervisor. They supervise a span of control, so you've got somewhere in the neighborhood of about 35 officers, and you divide that in half. Right now, what we currently do, we try to use the same model that's in place with Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, geographically speaking, so we divide the city in half. We have east sector and south sector, and we have midtown sector and west sector out here. And if you wanna draw a line, it's somewhere about 29th Street for east and everything south of the river, and then everything west of 29th, or everything west of 29th Street here.
Right, but we would have qualified people if we opened it internally, you feel?
Oh, absolutely, ma'am. I just put that on, I think it's more important to hire the officers first. That also extends my, if I have an internal pool, that also extends that pool for future development for the organization as well.
Thank you.
In lieu of what's happening in our society with the shootings at schools, do you feel we have everything we need to protect our kids? What would you add, or what do you think we need to do to better us such a question?
Well, I appreciate that. That is an extremely difficult and an enormous question. I think we're, we're adequate, but obviously, we can improve. There, there's, there's not gonna be, I used an old term, and I've learned this from a lot of people that I grew up around in the police department, you can put a cop on every corner, you're still gonna have crime in the middle of the block. What we have to work on as an organization is make sure that we have our SRP model in place. We have everybody working as a team player with that SRP. It has to be reversed, and it has, it's not one person's job, it's every person's job in this organization to execute that, to know if something bad shows up at our front door, we're able to implement that precisely with great precision. That is to mitigate the risk of life and/or injuries. I cannot tell you 100% we are completely safe, and I will always extend as a chief that there's always room for improvement here.
But what would you recommend?
Well, obviously, more officers. And I, I feel very concerned that we have a lot of elementary schools that we respond to, where we're not standing in, and, and they're almost vulnerable. They're the youngest children, there are no, no child or human being needs to be at risk at all, but they're the most vulnerable. Because it's usually, it, unfortunately, you know, I say fortunately and unfortunately, is that they use our concept with great precision, because they depend upon themselves only every day, where the high schools and the middle schools really kind of defer back to the police officers in the building. But if we need to strengthen anything in our district, it's definitely that elementary level.
Thank you.
And right now, what is your coverage of those elementary schools?
Hey, our response model only, because all the officers are in the high schools and middle schools for the current staff that we have. We also need to have a response model, like a, like a patrol response that's able to respond. And we also need to have an investigating model, so we can actually investigate our own crimes where they happen. Right now, we defer our felony crimes to Kansas City, Kansas Police Department.
Right. Respond to the questions that we have received as far as the authority you have as, for example, to break up a fight, to search for anything in lockers, to intervene in disturbance between teachers or administrators.
So our authority is the same authority as any Kansas police officer. So actually, we are, we are truly restrained by laws and constitutional authority, but we can, we can intervene on anything that has anything to do with life and/or safety. We are peace officers. So I think some of the confusion, if I'm reading you correctly, Dr. Lynn?
Correct, we've had this conversation.
Comes, comes from that, the, we used to have this, and now we have this, and they can't do anything. Am I reading you correctly?
You're reading me correctly.
So that is, we have to be safer and smarter how we do things. I call this, we, we are supposed to engage in voluntary contacts every day. A voluntary contact is just this, hey, how you doing? Good morning, good morning to the students, good morning to the staff. An involuntary contact, no matter how innocent it can be, is violating somebody's constitutional Fourth Amendment. It's called a seizure of an individual. So, and I'm setting the stage to kind of answer this question, if I may. So I think the best thing to do is I gave a scenario to all the administrators my first year here, and that, and that scenario was this, we have a very long hallway that goes right from the principal's office down the main hallway. And on one side, we have room 101, and on the other side, we have room 102. If we walk into 101, it's everything to do with a school-based behavior, code of conduct, right? When we go into that room? When we go into that room, we need to be attached to the hip or the shoulder of an administrator or school faculty staff member. Because at that point in time, by the constitutionality, that is not a crime that has been committed. We are there to keep the peace and maintain the peace, and we can intervene in any way we can with great new restraint and de-escalation skills. And we evaluate that situation, and hopefully that situation will go like it is, can handle itself as any kind of referral or disciplinary action as a code of conduct. In room one oh two, we have a criminal act, misdemeanor or felonious, however it may be. We need to take the lead on that because it is a crime. We could detain lawfully, we are not violating anybody's constitutional rights. And then we back back out, de-escalate the whole thing, turn that back over, make a decision based on our policies, district policies and our police department policies or district policies, whether to handle that school-based behavior as a, that crime that could be diffused back down to the school-based behavior and have that handled in the school with a referral, some kind of positive action so we're not having youth in the pipeline into the juvenile justice system. And that's also a law, Jacksonville three sixty-seven, now there's a statute that's tied onto that that we've been in agreement with, with the DA's office and everything else. But, we are not here to, I think, I think the board did a very good job when we went over the code of conduct. I didn't hear anybody talking about policing the kids in the school. It was all about interference and interventions and referrals. And I think that is our main job, but we're here as a city within a city concept. We have nurses, we have counselors, we have psychologists, you have your own police department. And we're here to respond to any need, anything that needs to be handled in that manner, that's our position here. The SRO model, the school resource model, has like four different areas that we model that off of. One is the law enforcement officer, we're here as a law enforcement liaison between us and Kansas City Kansas, the Wana County Sheriff's Department, the DA's office. We're here to advise on legal issues that could be of criminal nature for the district as a whole. We're here as informal counselors, because we have that ability, we have those social networks we can tie back into with the community, no different than our counselors and our social workers and so on and so forth. We're also, we could, here's what we lack in, is having educational intervention as an SRO model to work and interact and use us as an intervention to either educate young people on what not to do or use some kind of positive reinforcement for our agency and our offices involved. We're also kind of an emergency manager piece. That emergency manager piece is making sure that we're helping instruct or help with all of our safety plans, SRP modeling that we have, and hopefully that that's taking place in the right manner in all of our buildings with great consistency.
Would you agree that there is some lack of understanding?
There's always room for improvement, and there's always lack of understanding, that is correct.
And what?
Misunderstanding, I apologize.
Yeah, misunderstanding. What do you see as a remedy? An immediate remedy?
Continuous education, working, wanting everybody to work together. Once again, I have to go back to say, remember, I'm two years into this and I'm going to refer that our police department's like a two-year-old ambassador. And please hold me to that analogy by saying this. There's a lot of growing we have to be, we have a hundred and forty years of experience in this education, in this whole organization here. We have now four years in development, implementation and planning, growing as a police department. That we have to, there's a lot of culture changes that goes with educators here to my left, yourself as well, Dr. Ford, and there's a lot of growth patterns that need to take place moving from what a security guard did or could do or did do, whether right, wrong or indifferent, and now where we are with this SRO or this officer standing in school. I always tell my officers, it's not us versus them, that's not what we're here for. It's how can we do this as a team and how do we use those resources to benefit, better benefit the district and the students as a whole, to keep them out of the juvenile justice system.
Well, we're concerned, of course, of the reporting of fights, injury, getting calls to say the security guard goes home at four o'clock and therefore there's nothing for the evening activities or in the building, or that, some of your biggest fans say that-
Appreciate that.
No, I'm being sarcastic. The security guard is at the front door and all the action is someplace else. A place like Wyandotte, that is huge, and there's two, I'm sorry, not security guards. That, some of us are looking to increase your numbers because we don't believe two of whichever type are sufficient to maintain a learning environment, safe first, but understanding all students don't have the same attitude about law enforcement. Two thousand and eighteen, who knows what could happen as far as, you know, so many school shootings and everything else is just, that's not the new normal. You know, I refuse to accept it as a new normal, but it happens.
It should not be accepted as a new normal.
Exactly. So that's, so part of the conversation we were having is because as we go into a new year, we want to get ahead of that. That school's security should be something at the very top so that the safety of students but the learning environment is, has improved.
I agree, I think for the most part, and for the sake of executive sessions and school names and everything, I think we're trying very hard to work with all the administrators and faculty and staff members. I see staff in the back of the room, I know we've had several discussions, we've had several meetings with the E Ds, we've had several meetings with principals, I've seen great movement since then. Understand, I have to go back and tell everybody, remind this. Two people, one person, the standard model throughout the US is one person per school. If you add five officers, if you have an officer on every corner of the block of the city, five will happen in the middle of the block. This is a team effort. If we're engaged in this, it has to be from the top and the bottom of this organization. Talking about school climate, talking about building safety, whether we have doors that are unlocked, unsecure, how they are dealt with in a manner, protocols have to be adhered to. And that responsibility, quite frankly, lays in the hands of a building administrator and we're part of that augmenting that team concept in the school.
So holistic approach is what you're seeing?
Yes ma'am.
And so, I don't think you'd get any disagreement from anyone around this table. I'm not sure if it has been practiced, you have to tell us. We're just getting the naysayers responses.
I agree, I talked to the naysayers as well, and I appreciate that. That's one way we grow as a district, and that's what we have to do.
So is it correct that you all leave at four?
Ma'am, that is one of the shift, they work seven in the morning and three at four at night. And then we used to have a shift that was nine to six, but since the short, the vacancies occurred, that's the shift that's been eliminated. But, we also do things under extra duty permits. And I can tell you with all the stats I've turned into the prior superintendent, we work a lot of extra duty events that are tied to permits, whether they be activities or if there is a need that is necessary, we work officers over to make sure that those areas are attended to by permit, that's driven by permit. That's how we can account the dollars associated directly back to the schools. And we're including, the other magic that I forgot to pull is that we're also, we have seven officers dedicated to our libraries. So, we also fill the libraries with that service as well.
So if you were to increase your officer, excuse me, by one at each high school and make adjustment to respond quicker, whatever, appropriate, more appropriately for your elementary schools, what would be the best case if you had the time and money, how many would you?
Was that the big superintendent of the day question?
If you had time and money.
Okay, so-
No, that's for her.
The practical model, correct, the practical model that you would think of and being realistic. I've told Dr. Lane, like with all the other administrators in this room, I can't be the chief that stands up here, you just got done with the conversation, you're trying to figure out what money is. I can't be the chief that stands up in front of you and says, hey, I need X amount of more officers, that X amount of more dollars that you're trying to dedicate to academics and education to these young people. Now, in a perfect world, if I did this, we need our investigation team. If you had, if you wanted to go back, if we were able to fill the jobs that are vacant, that'll give us that nine to six shift that gives us an extra officer, the third officer in the schools. My preference is, is that we maintain two officers, we can make their shifts happen wherever we want to, but as soon as I do that, one is one, two is, where do we stop with this? So, then the other part would be is that you need a response model. So that response model can either be, we can take the response team of either ten more officers and divide the fifteen middle, or the fifteen elementary schools, and they can spend time interacting with those kids in the elementary schools, and they can spend time stopping by each elementary school every day. But officers are, get them hired, get them to the academy, response is cars, vehicles. Right now, we pay for mileage, so it's either going to be one way or the other, so there's a lot more to that model. Remember, we're growing.
I understand, there's a cost to safety, there's a cost to security. We understand that, and that's why we're trying to have an open, real discussion. If we're going to look for, how many pages is the book, fifty, a hundred? If we're going to peel off a penny on every page, we need to know, you know, I mean, this is super serious and we're serious about what you're saying and what we feel as parents and teachers are responding to us is a real need.
I took this job to be very serious about this ma'am. So I can tell you that, I don't have the direct answers off the top of my head, if you need me to draw up a model-
Start thinking about it, start thinking about it.
And I would also probably like to spend time with the new superintendent-
I was just gonna-
-to get his ideas and input as well.
You know, that's given, but we're here today and we're looking, I mean, things don't change overnight. Sure enough, let's say just really so. But we had to have this, we haven't had this conversation ever.
Really?
We have never had this conversation, and we're waiting on-
And in my two days, I have gotten too deep in this with you, other than meeting you this morning. So I'm anxious to sit down and look at your school security plan. I had the opportunity to go through that training in Pennsylvania and update our plan in Topeka. So I'm anxious to see your plan and kind of how you're planning on making sure it's implemented and that. And that's a good place to jump off on adding to your budget once you define what your plan is. I also want to remind you that the new superintendent has big school experience. He's been in Houston, he's been in North Carolina. This is not going to be something he hasn't had conversations about before. So I'm anxious to hear what ideas he has, whether we go. And then I wanted Greg just to take a second and kind of reiterate some thoughts that you had about school security officers versus increasing the force.
Yeah, and so let me kind of cycle back to the reason, or one of the reasons that the district moved away from the security officer model to the law enforcement model, the sworn law enforcement officers. So you had a couple of things. One, so back prior to the creation of the school police department, which is permitted and allowed by statute, you're not, you're no longer, there are several districts in the state that are starting to adopt or go to this model of having a sworn officer that is trained and appropriately licensed by the state of Kansas. And it's that licensure and that training that provides you a lot of insulation and liability if the officer has to act in a situation to address a violent situation, to detain somebody, to arrest somebody. You get a lot of more discretion in terms of the liability piece. And frankly, a safety piece for your students and your staff because they're trained law enforcement officers as opposed to a security officer that doesn't have the same kind of licensure and training. So when the district at that time had contracts with the police department for SROs, and those were the only law enforcement officers in the buildings, that's fairly expensive. And they also were in a position where they could be called away if needed by the local police department. Whereas if it's your own police department, you don't get called away except in an assist model where there's a real emergency requires assistance by different departments to each other. You have an inter-local agreement both with the Kansas City Kansas Unified Government as well as I think you've got one with the Community College to provide mutual assistance, so that's sort of a separate piece. But the issue was, the decision was made that shifting away from the security officer model where you don't have the training, you don't have the ability to enforce the laws, make arrests, things of that nature, protect in the same manner that you can from members of the public that might come in and create some sort of violent act without imposing liability back against the school district. You have that with the sworn law enforcement officer, it is more expensive, let's be clear about that. But, at the same time, you're paying for more quality in terms of what that protection is. And I would suggest instead to you that having a sworn law enforcement officer is much better protection both internally and externally for the district than having security officers. You went through the process at that time when that happened of having all of your officers, security officers be afforded the opportunity to go through the training. And if they qualified and passed the training, then they became law enforcement officers within the district. So you increased your force by that initial rounds. The folks that did not pass that test remain employed as your security officers. They're long-term employees, they've been grandfathered in, but frankly, they've not had the law enforcement training that your sworn officers have. The suggestion that the law enforcement officers cannot assist to keep the peace within the schools or to assist administrators with enforcement of policy concerns is not correct. They can't do that, they just can't independently enforce some of those policies and procedures. They can independently act and address criminal matters as the chief has indicated, but frankly, a fight is technically potentially a criminal matter. They can break up a fight and they can detain individuals in a fight, they can secure individuals, apply restraints in that situation. And they don't have to comply with the same emergency restraint interventions that a non-sworn law enforcement officer would have to comply with. So again, you're buying protection from liability and exposure because they've had the training, they have the qualifications, they have some degree of immunity that somebody who's not a sworn law enforcement officer has. So, you know, certainly, if you ever wanted to supplement, you could do so, but with a security officer, but your problem is going to be if you supplement your security, your law enforcement force with security officers, you run the risk of a security officer doing something that is beyond the scope of their ability and having some liability or exposure, perhaps not protecting your kids and your staff in the same manner that law enforcement officers do. So, that's sort of the thousand-foot away from the legal side of things. Obviously be aware of the budget, you guys can make decisions, but if you're asking my opinion and you want to increase staff, hire more law enforcement officers, that's my opinion.
And what is one cost?
The sparse total cost?
Correct.
I have to break that down.
Can you get that?
I have twenty-two fifty an hour employees, so we can get those numbers.
And I would like to suggest when we have our individual kind of get to know you meetings, we could have a discussion about that too, how y'all are feeling about moving forward. And honestly, this is a good discussion to have. I mean, it should be regular and we should always be thinking about safety, always keeping it in the forefront of the board's conversations and administrations too.
I'd just like to ask one question. Chief Horn, what is your attitude about hiring retired officers?
I, there's, you have to build a department with younger people, I'm all in favor of that. But right now, as new as we are, I need a lot of wisdom too.
Sure.
So I take that twofold, I get a combination of both. So I have some, I actually am recruiting some retired officers, they bring a lot of wisdom in. But let's not forget, I've got officers that have been in the school system as security officers. They know how the school system works. And then I have young people that want to come in. Now, here's where we have to look at a younger person is, a lot of young people want to get into law enforcement and what they want to do is get in law enforcement, chase bad guys up and down the streets all day long. So I appreciate that, and that's going to make for a fine police officer one day. But the school system's a little bit delicate venue, so we really, we find some young people, but they really are attractive to the bigger police departments. But I'm all about getting some young people in here because I should not be here a lot longer in my life. My idea is to build this thing, not break it along the way, hand it off for another generation and keep succession planning going further in that. We can even entertain further if we get down into the road is that we really need a implementation of like an explorer cadet program like influence me in the law enforcement.
Sure.
Where we can attract even high school students to get into this down the road, but that's a further discussion down the road.
Let me ask you this, you know, sometimes I think we're- Let me ask you this, you know, I, I, sometimes I think we're missing an opportunity in that, you know, you guys are here to provide, to ensure safety in this environment, but there is a training component that is very significant. I think, you know, a, a police etiquette class with individuals who are out in the community and really don't know how to interact with police, I think that would be pretty significant, and you were talking about the intervention programs that you're talking about, but we have to look at something like that. A lot of these, you know, we see it on the news all the time, where if they handled themselves differently, the outcome would be different, would, would be different, so I'm wondering if that makes any sense to you.
It does, that's part of that SRO model, this is the happy part of this discussion, is that we spent good money this year, we're bringing in the National Association of School Resource Officers, that implementation, that training to kind of give us a baseline, all of the officers starting the sixteenth going through, the sixteenth of July going through the twenty-seventh of July, we're breaking that up in half, we have forty-hour sessions of that, so all of our officers will be participating in that, and that's the basic course, I've already got it lined up next year to bring in the advanced course as well. That is going back to that four-tier model, and one of the things that we have to strengthen our department is, is part of that education piece. I know this from all the years that I was a commander in community policing, that's what this is all about, this is, the community is the school community, it's the kids, it's the parents, it's the teachers, it's everybody, and, and we have to be in that role, that same role, but we're always good as our organization, and, and I'm willing to do that, we need some more people because obviously, that's what it's going to take to grow this, they can't just stand in the schools and do this, they're going to have to get infiltrated into other areas to educate, so I do appreciate entertaining that conversation in the future about other roles.
Thank you, thank you for your cooperation and patience.
Thank you, we're good.
The next item that we have on is a review of the chief public affairs officer position, and then some lobbying activities that the district is involved in. It's our recommendation at this time that we do not fill the chief public affairs officer and wait until Dr. Faust gets here, we do feel like there's some options within the district to have some of those, that job description is attached, but we look at that, there's some ways we could divide out the job description among current staff, but that will give him time to kind of see what he feels like he needs. We also have been paying for some lobbying, I'm looking at the name right now.
Capital Strategies.
Capital Strategies, and I did review it, what we've been paying, and it doesn't seem to be excessive. The good news about this contract is it does not really come before the board until December and begins in January, so I think there's time to evaluate if that could fill in on the position, and I'm going to be honest, what was paid was a lot less than what I was paying in Topeka for similar services, so it may be something that you want to keep that going, but you would have time with Dr. Faust to see if it is something from there. I did call the Dodge City Superintendent, colleague of mine, and they are part of the Schools for Fair Funding, and a big question is, right now, we are budgeting quite a bit of money from the district that goes to that, to the court case and representation on it. The good news is, you haven't been using state money, what you've been using is a rebate on public utilities, so the feeling of the superintendent at Dodge, and he was kind of in conversation with some of the districts that were involved in it, not knowing what's going to happen in January when they come back, they anticipate there'll still be some costs associated with the, this group, but they anticipate it being quite a bit less, at least we're hoping it will be less, it's going to, they're need, going to follow through with the legislation this time and then monitor it past it, is my understanding.
Right.
So it's unknown whether it will be as much as we've paid in the past, which was a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, I mean, it could be a decrease in that, and it shouldn't be anymore, so, but I think all the superintendents are kind of saying, where are we going with this? I talked to some of my legislation friends or colleagues with you, and I'm hearing that they feel like that this is doable to make sure that this court cause, that the, what was recommended by the court case, that that obligation be met this next year. We did have some good news yesterday with the tax, taxes coming in higher than expect, revenue coming in higher than expected, so hopefully, you know, the legislation when they get back there can wrap this up for us, be monitored for a while, and that will be an expense that we no longer have.
Schools for Fair Funding is coalition of about five, excuse me, fifty?
Yeah.
School districts, small, large, largest being, of course, Wichita, and I don't know how the assessment is made.
It's by per pupil, so it, it does end up, you pay more than a small district.
Another small school, but chances are, the courts will retain jurisdiction, and so you wouldn't want that coalition to dissolve, so that, that, but the, the good news is, paying it out of something other than...
Rebate on public...
State funds, because that's always a big argument that, that you don't have to have, so, that's good.
So that would be our recommendation, just to hold off on the chief, or the chief of staff position, look at that contract again with your other lobbyists, that really is not due until December, and then also we'll keep a watch on the fair funding. And, should we go ahead with it?
I believe, so you have the next item, board calendar, it's a short one.
It is short, and we don't have a whole lot of things, we have our board meeting that's coming up on the tenth, and remember that that was a changed date, and we also have one on the twenty-fourth. I might remind you tomorrow, the office is closed, except for some people that might be working, but it is a holiday, there's some exciting things happening, I know at the fifth, it's on our website, there is a barbecue and a water event at one of the, yes, so that would be kind of fun to drop in on. Then I do kind of, I mentioned our Green Bush meeting on the budget, but we're already looking on the sixteenth of July is when administrators report, that's unbelievable, isn't it, how fast summer goes anymore, so, and our new teachers in service starts on August first, so, you know, as we see these times ticking, it's important, and that's one thing I will be checking with the staff on, is kind of going around and meeting with them individually on how are they for back to school, what are they, short on, what do they need help with, but all in all, I have to tell you, these last two days have been real enjoyable, and you have some terrific folks that work here, and we just need to keep remembering that too, so.
Well, we're looking forward to it, any questions?
Um, can I recommend that we move the July tenth meeting to four o'clock?
Oh, we would be happy to hear about.
So we can move it up a little.
I guess, the thens.
Does that work for everybody?
Will that work for everyone?
July fourth is a Tuesday.
July tenth?
I mean, tenth.
That works for me, does that work for this?
We're checking our calendars.
She'll probably be back.
She comes back on the seventh.
Oh, she comes back on the...
Doesn't she, come back on the seventh?
Five comes on the ninth, but she'll be here on the tenth.
Any challenge over here?
Okay.
Okay, want to make that motion?
Yeah, some motion that we move the July tenth meeting to four o'clock P.M.
To four P.M.
To four P.M.
It's been a motion to change the July tenth meeting from, from five to four, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passed. Any other?
If that's the case, I'm just asking, can we change to twenty-four to four?
Let me, let's, while we're talking about this, in our, the tenth is our reorg meeting, so at that time, we'll have to set our meeting times and the dates for the year, is it the interest to go to four instead of five, or...
Why don't you let us think about it?
Are you just talking July, or?
I think she's just...
Just July.
But it's something that will come up.
Right, and stay at five for the rest of normal throughout the year?
Keep it at five.
Can we wait to the superintendent come?
Well, we'll have to set up, do our...
Calendar on the tenth.
We have to do our reorg, but I don't think we can wait until...
Does that exclude... Does that exclude taking action on the twenty-fourth, or not? I don't think it does.
No.
It does.
You can change it on the tenth or twenty-fourth.
You want to pursue it, you want to...
They want to meet on the twenty-fourth.
You know, I could send out a survey to what people are feeling.
Will we go ahead and deal with it now?
Can you meet on, at four on the twenty-fourth?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we move the timer on the twenty-fourth.
To four?
To four o'clock.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving second to also make the twenty-fourth meeting at four P.M. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passed, but realizing then July tenth, we need to think ahead for the next year, correct, Susan?
And as we do the calendar, what's the consensus about the four-day meetings during the year at schools, is that something that you liked, didn't like?
Can we take that up on the tenth? Because people need to know, I mean, need to think about it.
Yeah, I mean, I can go ahead and put it in the calendar of dates, and then we can change it then if we want, or I just didn't...
Since that's next week.
Would you tie me effective, when the fact that we go to the schools, I prefer to leave it as is.
But you want dates? You already have the first dates?
I mean, just normally, we do two in the fall and two in the spring.
Oh, there you go.
And I'll bring a tentative calendar, then we can look at it on the tenth, I just wanted to make sure that it was the consensus that we'd like to do, keep it, those day meetings.
If you could, are you going to send it to us in advance so we have time?
Yeah, it'll be posted.
Oh, good, good, because the sooner it's posted, the sooner we can look at our calendars. Another thought that came to mind is supposed to be with Dr. Faust to discuss his goals and objectives, do we need to schedule that?
And do we know a date yet? I can kind of...
I, I got to call him tomorrow anyway, we're not tomorrow, it's a holiday, but...
Can you send us an email?
On?
Just what she said.
Yeah, no, you guys need to get a time scheduled, because to, to meet with him before...
So we have to be with him as a group? So we be with him as a group?
Yes.
Okay, is there any late, things that we need to look at in advance, such as what's currently done, or the...
You can look at the past evaluation documents and stuff if you want.
Okay. Does Ray Associates provide any support on that?
I don't think so, it's not really part of the, you're, you're into the, what, what they're referring to, is there's a contractual provision?
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, I'll try to, there's, there's a contractual provision, requires him to be provided with goals by the Board of Education for the start of the school year, there's a date and a contract, and that that's, plays into the evaluation tool, you've got the evaluation requirement. I'm not sure if I may answer your question, because I'm not sure.
I'd say if we have some, like you said, we can look at previous thoughts, or you could provide guidance that could help us formulate our goals, will we be with him? And then, do we be with him after, or is it something we have to schedule in our board docs now, or on the tenth, or?
You could schedule it on the tenth, or the twenty-sixth, as long as it's...
So it'd be a special meeting, right?
Be a special meeting for them to, to meet with, or meet with the superintendent, superintendent to be, whatever his title is at that point in time.
But it is something that we need to schedule or think about for when we look at it on the tenth.
Calendar.
Calendar, and then that would also probably be something we need to build into the calendar since it's supposed to be four times a year, is that correct?
Twice.
Twice a year?
Which, I'm sorry.
We, we meet with Dr. Faust to review, four times?
Once each semester.
Once each semester, so we'll need to include that on our schedules.
But that's not a special meeting?
No, that could be at a regular meeting if you wanted.
Exactly.
It would just be an executive session.
Okay.
In fact, you could do the first one at any meeting if you wanted to, as an executive session too, it would have to be a special meeting.
Right, so it could be, it could fit into one of something we already have scheduled.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other items? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
So, second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Meeting adjourned, thank you.